... United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see how that works, Amy? Amy.
Can you come help Gail, please?
Amy, you see how that works? They don't start until you start.
I know. This is not. But that's what I'm going to start.
To our leaders' strikes up the men.
Mr. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Beistock?
Here.
Mr. Bent?
Here.
Mr. Carson?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Velikowski?
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Love?
Here. Nine present. Citizens comments?
I have no comment cards, Madam President.
Thank you, Jack. I'm okay.
Good.
Are you okay? Gail? Gail, are you okay?
I see almost everything.
Minutes?
At the next Thursday's meeting, we'll be asked to approve the minutes of the December 4th reorganization meeting, which we don't have attached. We'll get those attached for you right after the meeting.
Okay, counts.
We'll also be asked to approve the December financial report, the summary, and the treasures report.
Act One opt-out resolution?
Right, just a little bit of background for the newer board members and for the public. In 2006, Act One was passed. That was known as the Taxpayer Relief Act, and that act imposed certain requirements on school districts with respect to the district's ability to levy taxes. Specifically, the state provides us with an index each year that limits the degree to which real estate taxes can be raised. In our case, for the upcoming year, we're limited to 3.4 percent. In previous years, it had been 3.5 percent, but it went down a little bit this year. And I attached the index to you for your perusal, so you can check that out and see what we're limited to compared to what other districts in the state are limited to. Historically, we've utilized the opt-out provision and have not raised taxes above the index. We believe that we'll be able to utilize that option again this year. It's important to note that passing this resolution does not mean that the district will raise taxes. It only means that we will not raise taxes above the index if there's a tax increase necessary. The decision as to whether or not to raise taxes will be made when the budget is posted, and that'll be on or before May 30th. All this resolution does is state that we will not raise taxes above 3.4 percent. So currently, the Milligan Fayette County is 14.992 mills. The maximum that Fayette County's taxes could be raised to would be 15.5081 mills. Westmoreland County is currently at 74.61 mills, and we could not go above 77.15 mills. And just as an informational item, so you know, a mill of taxes is defined as 1/1,000 of a property's assessed value. So if a property has an assessed value of $50,000 and there's a 20-mill tax rate, the property tax on that property would be $1,000 a year. And in our district, a mill of taxes generates about $117,000. In some districts, based on what their total property values are, that might be a little more or a lot more, and in some cases, it's a lot less or a little bit less. Any questions on Act One and the opt-out resolution?
Elementary school performance reports, 2016 and '17?
Well, I have Mr. Mash and Mr. Clara here this evening. They were not the principals of our school last year, but they will be presenting performance data from last year when the PSSAs were taken. So I'd invite you down front, so you can see the screen. I got an in. up.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes to talk about the elementary school. As you know, Mr. Mash and I are dividing responsibilities for the elementary school this year. I have grades 2 through 4. Mr. Mash is working with grade 5, but we're really working with everybody. If a kid comes into the office, we talk to the student. I make sure if it's a 5th grade student, I consult with him, or if it's a different student that's in my group, he consults with me, but we want to work with all of our kids. There are lots of kids in the building, and they need help, and sometimes they can't wait for somebody to say, "Oh, I'll be right over." So we try to work with all of them. Some of the recognitions that the school has achieved over time: National Blue Ribbon Award in 2013, National Model of a Professional Learning Community at Work. It's the home of our pre-K counts program in our Scottsdale area. Notably, in some of our data, 12 percentage point increase in the number of students scoring at advanced or proficient levels in math at the 5th grade level on 16-17 PSSA tests. Some things that we did to try to change the culture and make the school a little bit more comfortable for kids and better for children. We changed our arrival time for students to minimize time sitting in gym and cafeteria. For a long time, in our elementary schools, our arrival time was 8:30 through about 9:10. So if you were a kid who arrived at about 8:30, you might be sitting in the gym or the cafeteria for a really long time. That's not a great way for you to start your day. 40 minutes in a really loud gym or a really loud cafeteria does not promote learning. So we cut that time down a little bit, so kids aren't waiting so long before they go to classes and start their learning. Hallway transitions. One of the things we really want to emphasize is we want kids to know that when you're walking in the hallway, that it's a quiet place of learning. So we want you to be walking the hallway, not running into each other, running everywhere you go. Difference between high school and an elementary school can be summed up in one sentence. In high school, I have to beg you to be on time. In an elementary school, I have to tell you, "Slow down," because you run everywhere. So we want to make sure kids aren't running in hallways and knocking each other down. We have class meetings to review some of those disciplinary data points with our kids. We talk to kids about the things that we're noticing in the first nine weeks. These are the kinds of behaviors we're seeing that kids are choosing to do, and these are the consequences and why we don't want you to do those things. So we're letting kids know what those things look like. Super Scotty Student Awards for character implemented, and we're working on the improvement of school culture and climate. Attitude has a lot to do with it, and if you try to be positive with people, I think you're going to be much more successful with kids. And I know Mr. Mash and I both think that's a very important part of what we do. Our teachers do the same. Attendance rate information, just so you know. We have really great attendance, which is a great sign. Kids are coming to school because they like school. It's not perfect, but we are working to continue to see that do well. This is who we are: 613 students as of when we printed this, 30 teachers. We do share one teacher with the middle school. That's our music teacher, Mr. Henigan. Four attendants that we share with the primary center. Four autistic classroom support aides, one school counselor, life skills classroom, and one aide. One administrator, and then Mr. Mash is our second administrator. 53 percent as of this writing. Free and reduced lunch count for students. 12.4 percent of our students qualify for some kind of learning support need, and we have one autistic support classroom. As far as how we are performing against others in the state, 3rd grade, the state performed at 55 percent. We were at 73 percent, and this is in math. In 4th grade, state was performing at about 47 percent. We were at 63 percent. State in 5th grade, 44 percent. We were at 60 percent. And I don't want to belabor numbers, but I want to point out that when you see some of our data a little bit later, you'll see a tremendous drop across the state when the tests changed. For a while, the PSSAs looked a certain way, and then in about 2014, 2015, they went to the PA Corps, and we had to learn again what to teach and how to teach it. So you're going to notice, not only did we not perform at the level we had been at once one time, but not many others did either. In language arts, 65 percent was the state performance. We were at 76 in 3rd grade, 62 in 4th grade, 76 percent for us, and in 5th grade, 60 percent and 69 percent for us. And in science, which has been one of our strengths, especially in the elementary and middle school levels, I'm very proud, and tell you that the state performed at 75 percent. We were at 89.3. Very good. So you have to talk about what you're doing well and what you're not. Three-year trend. If you see red, that means it's something we have to work on. Math has been an area where we really need to continue to make progress and grow. What we're doing differently in math is that we're doing things the way that we do reading. And the way that we do that is we teach to our whole group, and then we're doing some things in kind of like rounds, where kids do some practice individually or with a small group. The important thing for us to emphasize to you in reading and math is that for a long time, you taught what was in the book, and that was it. This is the lesson. Everybody gets the lesson. You either know it or you don't. What we're doing differently now is that we're teaching that lesson to everyone, but then we're getting you to practice at the level that you can practice at. Nothing is more frustrating than trying to do something that everybody else is doing that you're not doing as well. So we're going to try to grow your performance by giving you things that you can do well and build your confidence by giving you things that you can do well. They challenge you, but aren't things that you can't do. In reading, you can see much better. When you see blue and green, that means that we're making good improvement in those areas. Dark blue is really great, and green and blue are all good signs. So when you see green and blue, that's positive. 3rd grade, I just want to point out to you that all districts in the state, 770 schools in elementary, they are in the yellow at the bottom. Then green is our peers. Those would be schools that are around us in our IU. Westmoreland County IU is the one that we use for this chart. And then we are in blue, so we are outperforming many of our peers as a whole, the 17 school districts in the area. Some of our school districts in the area perform a little bit better. Many of them do not. And this is 4th grade mathematics. Again, above our peers and certainly well above the state. 5th grade, above our peers and well above the state. In language arts, we are slightly below our peers, but we're very high. 76 percent is a pretty good number. We're very pleased. We think we'll continue to do better with Daily Five and the reading system that we're using there. 4th grade language arts, well above our peers and above the state. And above in 5th grade language arts as well. And this chart shows some proficiency levels. Where you see the green, that indicates to you those are students who are proficient and advanced. Red and the pink color are kids who are not. These charts are difficult to read. I apologize. We try to make them bigger, but it's kind of tough to do. We are 5th there. Penn Trafford, Franklin Regional, Norwin, Hemfield, and us. 3rd grade math. In 4th grade, Penn Trafford, Franklin Regional, Norwin, Greensburg, Salem, and then us. And in 5th grade in mathematics, Franklin Regional, Penn Trafford, Greater Latrobe, Norwin, and then us. Language arts, Penn Trafford, Norwin, Franklin, Greater Latrobe, Borough, Hemfield, Derry, and us. 4th grade, Penn Trafford, Norwin, Ligoner Valley, Franklin Regional, Latrobe, and then us. And in 5th grade, Franklin Regional, Hemfield Area, Penn Trafford, Norwin, Latrobe, and us. And this is a chart that we thought would be interesting for you to see, how much money we spend on learning for children as opposed to our peers. So really, what that tells you is, for our performance, we are spending less money and doing pretty well. And that's not to say that we don't have things to do better. We do. But that is a good sign, that what we are spending our money on is showing improvement and growth for kids. And this is Westmoreland County in terms of school performance profile. That's taking all of that academic data, attendance data, and creating a number that tells you, so you can compare against others, how you're performing. In Westmoreland County, Norwin, Penn Traffords, two elementary schools, Kiskey, Greater Latrobe, Borough, Derry, Hemfield, Penn Trafford, and Franklin Regional, Norwin, Hemfield, and us. 81. Highest score up there is 94. Many of the schools are 81 and 82, very close in performance. So we're doing pretty well in Westmoreland County. In Fayette County, we are performing at the highest level of all the elementary schools. And against cyber schools, we're doing much, much better. So how do we do that? And this is kind of the part that I want to talk more about. A lot of what we do is trying to learn from each other and to work together to do things. For many years, teaching was what you could do by yourself with your students. And if you were lucky enough to have Mr. So-and-so, then you did well, and if you had Mr. Clara, maybe you didn't do so well, and maybe next year, you'd learn those skills if you got a different teacher. We try to make sure that all of our kids are getting the right things, because teachers work together in grade levels to know what those things are, and then determine how they're going to teach those things, how they're going to measure those things, and what to do if kids are struggling with it, and even what to do if they're already getting it. So we really focus on that process of teaming, identifying what we want kids to know and be able to do, and working towards that positive climate and interaction between Mr. Mash and I and our faculty and kids. We celebrate student successes and awards. Like I said, the Super Scotty student, we're doing that for the first time here. We've been doing that at the primary center for a long time. So if you're a parent who is familiar, it's something that we really like to do, to recognize kids for things that we know are important. And they're not just academic awards. They're character traits. We do a lot to recognize you when you're performing academically. We do a lot to recognize kids when they're performing athletically. We should also recognize you when you're being a great citizen. And yeah, Mr. Mash has some examples of them here in his school. So all across the district, we try to do those things. We call them Super Scotty in the elementary. High level of pride and professionalism amongst principal, faculty, and staff. I take what I do very seriously. I know Mr. Mash does, too. We are not infallible people, but I work really hard to do a good job, and I know that he does, too, and I know our teachers do. They care about what they're doing for kids. Consent through process. I listen to the advice of teachers a lot. When they say, "Hey, we have a question," or "We're thinking about..." I never taught elementary school, full disclosure. That wasn't my thing. I was a high school teacher. So if you ask me what's good educational practice for an elementary student, I'm not sure that I would be the person who would know it, but I'm surrounded by people who do. And they will say to me, "Hey, this is good," and I'm not so sure about that. I want to be counseled by teachers on what the right choices are for learning, because that's their expertise level and not Mr. Mash's or mine. Loyalty to the school and students. We take ownership of the school. We really care about what it looks like. We put a lot of time into the beginning of the year, putting up posters in the school to let kids know what expectations are at the school now, how we do things, and why we do them, and why we want them to be successful. High degree of care for the welfare of our students. Again, I'm going to speak for the people I work with. We care a lot about what happens with our kids. Sometimes, maybe too much. It's hard to turn it off. You don't stop worrying when you go home. The goals that were written for this year by our predecessor. One, establish a system within the school that ensures consistent implementation of standards-aligned curricula across all classrooms for all students. These are the things that we do to do them. And I hate to read the slides to you. I'm just going to emphasize a couple of things. Common planning time. Teachers work together to figure out answers to questions. If students don't do well on a particular skill, well, why? Was it the way that we taught it? Was it the questions that we asked? Was it the assessment itself? And if it was, what will we do about that? What can we do to improve student performance and their learning? And for us, can we use that information to do better next time when we teach it? Just constantly refining your practice and becoming better at what you do. And these are some of the steps that the school has taken. We write common formative assessments. All of our kids take the same kinds of tests, so we can look at that and say, "Across 3rd grade, or 4th grade, or 5th grade, okay, this is what we wanted them to know in this unit, and this is how they performed." Establishing within the school a system that ensures consistent implementation of effective instructional practices across classrooms. Talking about what's working for people. One of the best things that I go to every year is best practice meetings, where teachers say, "Hey, this is what I do to be organized. This is how I get kids to be organized." I went to a kindergarten meeting once and learned so much about organization that I went home and said to my wife, "We need to do this with our kids," because my kids don't seem to have very good organizational skills at all. I learned it in a team meeting. Now my kids are doing it. So vertical alignment. We talk between grade levels about what we're trying to do and how we're trying to do it, where things will be taught, where we expect them to be mastered. Team calendars that we create with our team leaders to say, "Okay, during the month when you're meeting for curriculum, what are you working on? And how will we know that you did it?" So those products are available to us. If I say, "Okay, what do your school norms look like? What do your team norms look like? What are your assessments looking like?" I can see those things. Team-generated norms and goals, how we behave. And other steps that we take... I'm sorry. Consistent and constant departmentalized team collaboration. We have a cycle. Teachers meet, and they talk, and they work on these things once in a six-day cycle for curriculum. Other steps that we take: greater cross-curricular collaboration. We really like our attendants to work with us on some of those things. Our gym teachers, our music teachers, our chorus teachers, they're working with others. I was talking with our chorus teacher today, and what we're doing in 4th grade language arts with poetry, she's also doing some things in music. And they're talking about writing lyrics and so on. So it's kind of neat how they're crossing things over. Early intervention for struggling students. IE time, which is something that we're continuing to work and refine to do better. After-school tutoring for targeting ELA in math. And we're using Study Island, which is a nice technology piece that people can use to practice outside of school. In closing, it's a work in progress. This is month four of Mr. Mash and I working together in the school, and I see great improvement in some areas, and in other places, I know we need to do better work. But the first thing you have to do is be willing to say that it's not perfect, and that there are things that we got to do better, and be okay with that. I would love to tell you when I walked in that, boom, it's going to be perfect this year. I don't know that I'm doing all the things well that I should be doing. I'm certainly trying. I know Mr. Mash is, too, but what I will promise you is that that is very important to us, to get better every time we do it. And to learn from mistakes, and to look at the things that we're doing well and refine them, and the things that we're struggling with, be honest about it, and then try to work on making them better. I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
I think I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the hard work and effort of one individual, and that is Mr. Clara. Mr. Clara has gone above and beyond, and I really appreciate, and I am honored to work with Dan. I know that he is really working hard to change the culture and what's going on in the school. And the second, it's the group of teachers that make up the elementary school. It's really easy to walk into a situation, which Dan and I did this year, and we were uncertain about how that would work, but it's really easy to walk into a situation where you have a group of dedicated teachers that are really working hard, and they have the same common vision and goals as we do. So it's been an honor and a pleasure to really work with them. And I, too, this was a learning experience my whole career with high school and middle school, and it's really different when you have a little kid come... One of the little ones walk up and hug you around the leg, you know, like... But I'm getting used to that, too, and it's really been a good experience.
One last thing I would say is, we have a great... I'm sorry. We're very fortunate to work in a nice community. We have great people. We have really wonderful... The kids are wonderful. I joke about sometimes, I've been in other places. I've worked in other places. I've had the fortune and good luck to have been hired here. I remember when I left the last job, I had, they were like, "Wow, it's so different from where you were." It is, and that's a good thing. We're very fortunate to live in a nice community, where we have beautiful facilities, we have good supportive parents. Again, nobody's going to tell you that we don't have things we need to work on. I would be a fool if I said that, but I think that the things that we have to work on are things that we can do well. We're surrounded by the right people. So again, thanks for entrusting us with it. We will continue to work really hard at it. Yes, Mr. Bent?
My question. You made a statement of, I think it was 2014, where the testing changed from PSSA to the council board. Now, and you said you had to change how you teach and teach to the test. How do we, as board members, and we have people coming up to us and saying, "All you do is teach the test to be successful. You're not teaching other things." How do we handle that when we have to do things like you're saying you do, where you go from this way of teaching to this way of teaching?
That's a good question. First of all, the first answer I give any time anybody says, "Well, you guys have to teach the test," is I would say, "Well, if I want my son to be a successful driver of my automobile, I don't institute flying in a plane. I got to put him on the road, and we got to figure out how to do it." That's what we're asking you to know how to do, because that's what we think is best for you. The state identifies for us, and through a lot of intelligent people, the things that they think kids need to know and be able to do before they go to college. And we take those pieces of information, and we try to order them in a way that we think, "Okay, we need to do this first, and then build on it, and build on it. We need to include these components." And when they change things, often we wonder why, you know? But again, it's not my job to tell them. It's my job to take that information and say, "Okay, how do we relate this to kids so that they can use it and apply it to real life?" Because ultimately, when they leave us, we want them to be able to do things with the information. It's one thing to say, "Okay, you did well on the test." It's another thing to be able to go out in the world and find something that makes you happy and be able to do it for a long time. That's a totally different conversation. I know lots of people who are great test takers who aren't necessarily great workers. Conversely, I know people who really don't like to take tests or get nervous at tests, but are wonderful at what they do. So we have to find that balance. I wish I could tell you, "Hey, we don't think about those things." Of course we do, because we're going to be accountable for them. But I would also contend that those are things that you need to know to be able to do. I mean, I need you to be a successful reader, and I need you to be a successful mathematician. I'm not a great math person. You don't want me to build your deck. Probably would have been better if somebody had said to me, "These are the things you need to know in order to be good in algebra, and if you can do these things, you'll be better at them." I think it's actually a good thing. I'm a believer in having measurements to tell us if we're doing a good job or not. Anything else? We're easy to reach, too. If you think of something and you want to ask, you can always email or call us, and if you walk out and you're like, "Ah, you know, I wanted to ask you..." Not hard to find us. We're the tallest of the people in this building, so, you know, just look for the guy that's taller. He's taller than me, so you'll be able to find us. But you're also welcome at any time to stop out and see us and see what we're doing. We're trying to make it a better school every day, and hopefully, we're successful at it. Again, I won't tell you that every step we take is the right one, but we are working hard to do it well.
Gentlemen, I'll echo. Thanks for the work you're doing. I know...
................................................................................................................................................
Superintendent Information?
Yeah, I don't have a report tonight. That'll be next week, but there is some information for you there on our free and reduced lunch count.
Solicitor Information?
Included in the documents under line category is a memo which I discussed with you, but actually, the memo is an additional explanation from Mr. John Pushkar, which explains some things about electronics and safety, and I would commend that to your reading to understand why I'm so worried about this area and why I'm trying to be careful with it in the way we handle it. So, but, you know, if any of you have questions, you know, give me a call. I'll be happy to discuss it with you. Thank you.
New business.
Oh, yeah, 2018-19 tentative school calendar. We'd like to get that adopted so that people can, you know, make their plans. We have a tentative opening day listed for August 23rd. That's an in-service day, with our first day of instruction being Wednesday, August 29th, followed, so that would be a three-day week. The following week is Labor Day week, so that's a four-day week, and then we move into a regular five-day week. We found that that model works a whole lot better for our youngest kids. You know, hot weather, long bus rides makes for very, very tired five- and six-year-olds, so we try to kind of acclimate them to what we're doing. You'll see the Columbus Day, Act 80 Day. There's a parent conference in November, Veterans Day. It is always a day off for us, Fall Recess, and so on. We have an in-service on Martin Luther King Day. President's Day is an Act 80 Day. Holy Thursday would be our first snow day. Then, Easter Monday would be our fourth snow day. The following Tuesday would be our third, and the Wednesday would be our second snow day. Last day of instruction would then be June 3rd, and last day of in-service would be June 4th, with the Kennywood picnic, the school picnic being on the 14th. We moved the picnic to after-school is out, as opposed to doing it in the spring, because generally, the school picnic was conflicting with Keystone testing, and we didn't feel that it was good to have students out on a day when we were in the middle of our Keystone testing that were held very accountable for. So, we'd ask that you would consider the calendar for vote for next week. Entertain any questions or discussion. Tough audience tonight.
Declaration of Surplus Items?
Yeah, as we walk through the storage areas in our buildings, we find that we have things that haven't been used in many, many years. We have everything from overhead projectors to obsolete textbooks to broken tables and chairs, and every once in a while, you just have to house clean. So, what we'd like to do this summer is to have you authorize administration to declare those unused and unusable items as surplus. We'll, at that point, try to sell them, and then those that can't be sold, we would ask permission to dispose of in an economical manner, generally with a recycler if at all possible.
Athletic Training Services?
Yeah, this is something that we talked about, I believe, in November, and for whatever reason, we just never got it onto the voting agenda, but it's the contract with Exela Health Services, Exela Physician Services for our athletic trainers. And if you look, it's a, I believe it's a five-year, four-year agreement, frozen the first year with what we're paying now, $19,000 a year, and then a $2,000 increase in subsequent years for the next four years. We've been very pleased with the services we received from Exela. Prior to having Exela come on board, we used student trainers from California University, and we had a trainer supervisor with students, and every year, we had different interns, different interns, different interns. We had a gentleman, Paul Servola, who was our trainer for probably the last six or seven years, however long we've been with Exela. Paul has since been promoted, and now he is the supervisor that supervises this account, and we have a new trainer whose name is... Yes, so she's been working for us as well, getting her up to speed on what our expectations are, but very, very cooperative, seems to work well with the coaches and the students, so we would recommend that you renew that contract.
Personnel?
This is all I have for public consumption. Everything else would be executive session material at this point.
Are we going to adjourn, or do you want to do citizens' comments before we adjourn?
We can do citizens' comments, and then adjourn to executive session.
We're going to do citizens' comments before we adjourn to executive?
Entertain a motion?
Entertain a motion to adjourn to...
Favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bang your gavel, adjourn to executive session.